Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get started because most of us are here. Jim Sullivan, President of the Rotary Club will probably join in with us. And right away, I'm just gonna dispense with all the formalities and just call this meeting to order and all that kind of good stuff. And here's Jim. So we won't do any of the formal stuff because I really want to kind of get to the meat of the matter. I also really, for everyone, I would love to keep this meeting to an hour just because I think we can. So y'all can help me achieve that and that would be great. Does everyone know everyone? I, Chief, you want to introduce yourself? It's kind of self-explanatory.
Hi, everyone, I'm Greg. I've met most of you, heard of all of you, proud to be part of the group. And just want to serve like the rest of you. So I'm nothing special, I'm just Greg. Okay.
Okay, and Jim, I don't know if you know everyone, do you know everyone? He's muted, you're muted.
Greg is both something special and Greg. So I know Kathy, I know Garn. Demetria, I've, I've, I think been in one or two meetings with you, but don't know you well. I'm Jim Sullivan.
Hi Jim.
Yes. Patrick Stewart, I'm only slightly disappointed you're not Captain Picard. Daniel DeFranco, nice to meet you, Jim Sullivan. Kathy, how are you? Good to see you.
Great, how are you?
All right, good deal. So with that, why don't we just jump into it. Barry has a conflict with his, I know it's tax season, so he's meeting with his financial planner, accountant, something like that. He may pop in at some point in time. I tried to as best as possible not inundate you with information, but did try to pull things together so that this at least had some semblance of structure, for lack of a better word. So if you'll give me a little bit, I'll run through this pretty high level and then, and then we can go from there. Does that work for everybody? Does that work? All right. So we, the event will be the first of May. It will be from nine to noon, just from a practicality standpoint, and I'll kind of get into that in a little bit. The location is now going to be at the DPW Garage there on Blue Star. And you know, I thought about it chief afterwards, I'm like, I don't even know the chief needs to join us. So I appreciate being here because originally it was going to be at the fire department. And I certainly needed him high and heavy and hot involved with this.
Garn, if I, if I could ask, you know, I really like the linkage of the hazardous waste pickup at the fire station. I mean, it's, it's helps to link the safety issues. So it's a little muted moving over next door, but is it just access or safer or something?
Yeah, well, let's, maybe the chief can help me answer this in a very diplomatic and political way.
I think it, it in some way, some ways would be easier. I assure you, I will be there. I will help with any safety issues. I'm on my own time. I will be professional and protect everybody to the best of my ability. And if I can't do it, all I have to do is click on a radio and I'll have them there. So don't worry, it'll be good. I think that DPW is a great source as well. I merely wanted to step up to the plate and volunteer that first because it was straight from the heart. It's a tri-community facility. Whether we do it in Douglas or we do it in Sagertuck City, we all want to do the same thing, so.
Okay, just curious, so, thank you.
Yeah, and there was a lot of paperwork that we'll save ourselves by just doing it at DPW. So which wasn't worth the energy nor the expense, so. But I hear you, but I hear you. So again, I'll just keep going and if you have a question, just pop right in. Sign up, I have set up in signup Genius, which is a platform that I use as a volunteer in many different organizations for signup. It was recommended to me by Kate Nice, who heads up the Clinton County Recycling Program and Household Hazardous Waste Program. It's free and it's, so far I've been able to get it set and ready to go. So I may throw it, I may set it up as a test and send it to you all to help me test it out. But you know, being the nerd that I am, it brought me great joy to figure it out. So stay tuned on that one. Fees, fees I'll kind of get into down below. Volunteer signup, I thought I might do the same thing, use the signup Genius just so I have people's information and I can remind them, okay, hey, you signed up, blah, blah. Swag, we'll, we'll talk about this in a little bit. This, this has kind of come up, so don't let me forget that. Set up, I'll talk about in a second. Refresh, boy, I have donations and fees in there twice. It's a good thing I read this. Refreshments I have here, Garn will coordinate with Uncommon Grounds, Restbut and Isabelle's, but I'm happy to take that off if someone else would like to step up and coordinate that effort. I'm planning on, as far as soliciting donations from the community, as soon as we kind of chat today and agree on a structure, I'll get ready to post this. I have a Venmo account set up where all donations would go to the Rotary Club right now. So then I also, and sorry, bear with me for promotion, right now what I've been thinking about are some ads on social media, a public service announcement on the paper, and then also an article in the Commercial Record. Scott Sullivan and I have been trading notes back and forth. He's already been, Scott's already been wonderful with the recycling committee as far as our every second week article. And so when I asked him if we could do a special article or feature on the household hazardous waste days, he's like, absolutely, let's, let's talk. So he's got a lot of this information and probably will have a thousand questions for me. Signage, I put here, Chief Janik, you have an electric, you have still that sign that we can use?
Yes, Garnet, my intention is twofold, to borrow Grassco Fire Department's message board, which simulates an MDOT board. Matter of fact, you'll see two of them on Park Street for the pole replacement project this weekend. So I'm going to borrow one from Grassco Fire Department, also maybe some time, I don't know, the third week in April, we'll post a notice on our reader sign in front of the fire department promoting the event, if you would like.
That's, yeah, please, on fireboard, reader sign, I know Kathy's taking notes, but, all right, great. That, that would be huge of getting the message out. When I met with the gentleman from Drug and Lab Disposal, they're going to bring three signs that morning. And I'll chat about that in a second. So I, I think, I think we'll be pretty good on signage, so let's hold that thought, yeah.
I had a question. We've been doing banners for Mount Bald Head and some other things right under the art sign. If we pick that up, would that be something that would be valuable?
Perfect, yeah, I know that has to go through city council for approval. So yeah, that'd be great, that'd be pay more the mayor. And then I had here public safety, you know, so obviously the chief will be there. But it was also recommended that perhaps we have one or two other public safety officers there for support, really more than anything else. So those are kind of the recommendations. So with that, all, so I met with Doug Corstange from Drug and Lab Disposal, that's who we'll be contracting with for the Household Hazardous Waste Day. He and I met at DPW, I'm losing track of the days, I think it was Tuesday. He's been doing this for about 33 years with them. He wanted to take a look of, at how it's, how, you know, the in and the out and everything. And he was absolutely delighted with basically the opportunity that it provides. He recommended, kind of like along the lines with the chief had, had recommended early on, is that folks come in on Maple and exit on Blue Star. Because to do it the other way, we'll end up having people backed up on Blue Star. And the great thing about that DPW is there's such a long drive from the garage all the way back to Maple. You can have quite a few cars lined up, one after the other, chief's nodding his head. So that was, that was Doug's suggestion. They will arrive no later than 7:30 and set up. They will bring one big semi and one big, he called it a straight truck. I don't know enough about this stuff, but he, he was very pleased to see when you, when you come into the DPW from Blue Star and you pass the main building on the left, then there's this huge courtyard and then another building. And that, that courtyard is plenty of room enough for them to set up both those trucks so that it doesn't in any way impede that straight line that's coming from Maple to Blue Star. It's a pretty straight shot. They'll be able to set up their tables, they bring all this. He's bringing at least 10 staff and that's why they are adamant, adamant, adamant that not one of us touches anything that comes out of a car, that it's their staff that takes it out of a vehicle. And they're the ones who separate it and they're the ones, you know, he says if we get to a crunch time and we need one or two people to help, he says, but it's not very often that that's the case. So I was pleased to death with 10 people, I'm like, holy moly.
So Garnet, well, when they set up or they have streams for that, two cars to come forward to be serviced by them?
Or? One, one right after the other. So let's, you know, let's say I'm in my vehicle and I open up my trunk and one or two people unload my trunk. The next two people will go to the car right behind me and start unloading, so they're, they're moving pretty efficiently. What, part of this signup Genius, and I'll apologize for kind of skipping around, what, what the gal from Clinton County recommended is she's like, Garn, you, you, number one, you must, you must, you must have people sign up to participate in this day. You cannot have it be a free-for-all because it will just be uncontrollable. So she recommended this, and this is what I've set up, she said 20 vehicles every 15 minutes. And that basically, you know, and she said you'll fill up, so we'll have 280 vehicles in a three-hour, three-hour period. And Doug said, yeah, I see your hand Kathy, Doug said, yeah, and you can count on the fact that you'll have a couple of 90-year-old guys that'll drive up. They'll laugh, I didn't know anything about a signup, and he says, that's okay, but if you, yeah, he's like, take my word for it, this is what will happen. Yes, Kathy?
I just wondered, Barry was concerned about making sure that they were residents. Will this be something that is included in the signup?
Yeah, I asked for their name, an email, and where they reside. And so whether it's the city of Sagertuck, city of Douglas, or the township, what I will do then, part of that is setting up a follow-up reminder email, and that's where I will give them their instructions. Here are the items that are accepted, here are the items that are not accepted. You know, all, basically all, do not get out of your car, all this, these are your instructions for that day. So, and then we can also, what I might do is include in there, please be prepared to show a driver's license, you know, to verify that you live at this location. Because, you know, probably I've had a couple, a handful, one or two people kind of fuss a little bit. They own a house here, but they don't reside here full-time. And I don't quite know how to handle that one. I feel real, a real obligation to take care of our year-round residents first. I would love to get to the point where we have, you know, a couple of these every year where we don't have to worry about that. But our residents have been sitting on stuff for 13 years and I really feel an obligation to take care of them first. I recognize everyone pays taxes, so I don't know, maybe you have some thoughts about that? I don't know, anybody?
No good dude goes unpunished, I'm sure. Swag from somebody, but.
Nicely said Kathy.
Yeah.
The broader concern about sort of the forecasting method of what we think will come through in these hours. 280 vehicles seems to be our upper limit on visitors, if you will. And we were charged 88 cents a pound, and so have any of the other township or city people been able to tell you how many pounds comes in in a vehicle?
It just depends, but I know this is the question that, Garn, how much exactly is this going to cost? And I talked to Terry yesterday at Drug and Lab Disposal, you know, I'd love to be able to tell exactly. But a good example would be, and for those of you who were on the call yesterday with Emmett County, they do household hazardous waste days three days a year. Their last one was just, just below $8,000. And there's the same kind of three-hour period, signup, that kind of thing. So that seems to be, when we talked to Lake Town Township, Al at Lake Town Township, that seemed to be the same, you know, kind of seven, eight, you know, at the most. And that's why you'll see later on, I've recommended some fees for some things because, you know, these heavy items, people are going to have to, they're going to have to pay a little bit. So I'm, yeah, I'm thinking probably this first time, if we, I think we'll be seven, eight, that's about where we'll be. The good thing is, I mean, if, if everything comes through the way that it's looking with everybody's generosity, I will have a really, a nice cushion enough to actually consider doing a second one in the fall. So I, you know, I, I feel really good right now. Yes, Jim?
Suggestion, might it be that we, since this is the first time we've done this in a long time, have set up that prioritizes residents and if there's space available, will allow owning non-residents to also sign up. But make that, and in that, in that regard, then we get a handle on what is the demand in the two segments? And that might justify a fall, follow-up.
Okay.
You know, with some data.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, all right, let me keep going through here on Drug and Lab Disposal. Doug will send a complete and as possible list of household hazardous waste accepted items that was included in the documents that I sent you yesterday. We can fly through that and hear a little bit. And then basically, this was a question that Scott Herbert asked, he's our supervisor at DPW. You know, what happens to all these items? And he said literally, they are burned with high thermal, through high thermal incineration. They are not disposed of in a landfill. Like, cool, so I thought, and this will come up and I'll, when, when Scott, when we work on the article for the paper, I think I'll make a point of making sure that that's in there, that so that folks know. Because that tends to be a concern to a lot of people. So then through that discussion with Doug, with Drug and Lab Disposal, Kate Nice with Clinton County, a variety of other people, you know, Doug said, hey, what are you going to do about car batteries? I'm like, oh my God, I didn't think about car batteries, they weigh, they weigh a ton, they weigh 60 pounds. And you get a couple of people bringing in car batteries and you're pretty much, you know, you're going to be at, and I said, what do you suggest? She says, I'll charge, she says, I would charge. So he said 20 bucks, that'll be good. You know, the thing is, they could take it to Autozone or anywhere else and turn it in if they were so inclined. But what I'm, what I'm learning is that, and this is a generalization, folks are inherently lazy. And if they can bring it, bring it down the road one mile, that's what they'd rather do than take it up to Holland, which is going to take 15 minutes to get there. So this is what I've learned, but what I'll do is, you know, we'll basically say, you know, 20 bucks for a car battery and then $10 for the monitors, which has been very clear from the very beginning, whether it's a TV monitor or a computer monitor. They, he did say they will also take small air conditioning units as well as dehumidifiers because they contain freon. And I'm like, okay, I am learning so much. So I didn't know if we wanted to charge for those types of items as well. I started.
Dehumidifiers are really heavy.
I know, yeah, as our little baby air conditioner, so, you know, I didn't know if we charged the same thing like for a battery, those heavy types of things. What do y'all think?
I think it ought to be 20 bucks for all of these things.
You know, because of the weight of them, I, I think it would be reasonable to, to put a $20 charge and, you know, if someone walks at that or says I can't or I don't have any money.
Yeah.
Be what it is.
One thing that, what was the young lady's name yesterday? Andy with Emmett County. I was, it's always pleasantly, you know, it's very, very nice to hear that folks are so generous and they take donations. Even though folks in Emmett County, they take donations for the Household Hazardous Waste Day. And she said, on average, they receive $20 a person. And so what, what happens is you have some who give more and some who can't, and it all just kind of averages out. And so, so what I would, will also do on the signup sheet and then all the advertisement and everything, if you will, is donations suggested. I'll have definite amounts for these heavier items, but then also make a good point of saying donations accepted. Does that work?
So you'll take them physically as well as the Venmo, because I know a lot of people speaking to my family don't know how to Venmo.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll figure out a way.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll figure out a way. Okay, does that work? The other thing that Doug, and this has come up many, many times, latex paint, and this is an educational thing. He suggested that we teach folks how to dry it out with kitty litter and then it can be disposed of in the trash. So, but he said, you know, you'll have people who will bring it and we'll take it. But if you could on the front end proactively teach them how to take care of that latex paint, that would, that would save a lot. Sound good? Lastly, I just kind of put together where I thought we might need volunteers. And for those of you who have been involved with big events like this, you can tell me what you suggest otherwise. I thought to have probably two people on Maple Street, one on either side of the entry, and then another two people along the, the drive in to remind people to stay in their vehicles. And there's another two to four to do the same thing. So I kind of envisioned having volunteers just kind of lined up along that drive. A couple to break down cardboard boxes. Doug said that people will bring things in boxes and you certainly want those to, them to take those with them. But a lot of times they'll leave them and so we should plan on breaking them down. If we have a lot of cardboard boxes left over, I can take them over to the Isabelle's cardboard dumpster. It's a slow, slow time for us, so I don't think we would overload our cord, cardboard bin. Another one or two people to collect and bag garbage, so I need to get garbage bags. He had actually suggested that we work with Republic or somebody to see if they might actually just deliver a bin or two. But when I talked to Jacket, they're going to charge me for that. So it's like, yeah, we'll, we'll figure out another way to do this. I was kind of, I was kind of hoping they might be a little magnanimous, but no, they're not being magnanimous, so I tried. A volunteer or two to assist with unloading if necessary, you know, Doug, Doug said he really thought they'd be a quick K, but we might need. And then a couple of people to direct vehicles out. And Chief, this is where I could really use your insight. I, I do have a little concern on what happens on Blue Star. I'm not so worried if people are turning to the south, it's if they're trying to get out and go to the north. Or do we just have them all go to the south? And I, I don't know, so it's a Saturday morning, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it's certainly a potential, we're going to have to just evaluate it based on what kind of traffic we're having May 1st. You know, it would be better off they go south, but we can't wrap around Maple to go north because we've got the lineup of traffic waiting to get into recycling. We really don't want to funnel them in through downtown, so I'll think of some ways. It's not easy to stop traffic on Blue Star we had before and you almost need two people to do it. But if that's what it takes to do it safely, then we might have to do that, stop the traffic.
Yeah, do you think, go ahead Kath.
Well, I was just wondering, do you anticipate that the exit closure will be in swing by then?
Probably, right?
I know that they plan on mobilizing like early April, so.
Go ahead Chief.
Could be right around that time, right?
Exit 41, Kathy, exit 41? Yeah, that, that, that was scheduled to be closed this past Monday and I think it's been delayed a couple of days. So that's on the immediate horizon, the, the closing of exit 41 southbound.
That could be a big impact as well, couldn't it?
Yes, yes. Would be nice if we could, I'm sorry, sorry Garnet.
No, go, no, go, please.
If we could foster some support from a designated county employee to help with traffic control, that would help.
Yeah, uh, yeah, why don't I, I'll check it with Lieutenant Enstfield and Janelle and see maybe who's on duty that day in the area. So I'm going to coordinate, I'm going to write myself a note, coordinate with Enstfield, Brett and Janelle. All right. Okay, and then a couple of, yeah, go ahead Demetria.
With the volunteers, either at the Maple Street entry or along the, the drive, which volunteers do you anticipate would check driver's license?
Probably along the drive, I would think. I, I would imagine that the first, the first two are going to be right there by the sign that says this way in and, yeah. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and what I, what I actually imagine doing is, you know, like, maybe a day or two before the actual event, that all the volunteers get together there and we go through kind of the process, kind of walk it through, do a walkthrough. You know, just real quick so folks visually understand. Also a checklist, you know, so they, so we can kind of talk about roles and responsibilities along the way.
Right, and where the bathroom might be.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, right now.
The off chance, one of us volunteers might have to use.
Yep, so volunteers and Drug and Lab Disposal staff will be able to use the bathroom in the DPW Garage. Real quick and then I'll kind of open it up. Doug brought this up, he said, yeah, you're going to have, you, you need to be really, really clear that this is not for businesses because you will have some paint businesses that just decide they're going to get rid of some of their old paint and you really, really don't want to do that. So we'll be really clear about that. And then just for this crew, so you understand financially how things are being funneled, most of you already know. But basically the city of Sagertuck is asking, is, is going to be the main point of the financial funnel. So the bill from Drug and Lab Disposal will be going through the city. The city of Sagertuck is invoicing, invoicing the city of Douglas and the township for their portion of the donation because there's a little bit of additional money in there for the committee to do some, some really neat things. And then the Rotary Gym, you and I'll have to, I think you and Ryan might have worked that out. But the city is the main, the lead on that, Peter, God bless him, he's always really, really good at this stuff. And so that's, that's how it's being funneled and it seems to have appeased everyone quite a bit. So with that, why don't I shut up for a bit and if you want, we can kind of stop, start up at the top again. And if you have questions, just throw them out, something, doesn't matter, there's no rhyme or reason. Anybody?
I think for promotion, I don't know, maybe Rana might be able to make a flyer for those places such as like the post office and super value demands.
Will you, will you check with her?
Yes.
Okay.
I will do that.
Great, yeah, this is.
Just a handful of, you know, of those places that, for those individuals who may not have internet.
Yep.
Okay. And they can always, if someone doesn't, they can always link up with a friend to combine their hazardous.
Right. Anybody else?
You mentioned swag at the beginning, t-shirts and.
Yeah, hats, slanted shirts.
Has slanted shirts, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yep. Rana is working on a design, Rana, I think everybody knows her except for maybe the chief. Rana is working on a design, Rana, I think everybody knows her except for maybe the chief, chief, I know her, she's very creative. And, yeah, she's really, really good. And she, you know, she was the one who brought it up first that we should have some kind of identifying. Hat, shirt, lanyard, whatever, I'm like, how about all of it? So, because I want, you know, I want something for folks to be easily identified, but also a nice takeaway for folks who are going to give of their time. So.
Garnet, can I offer a suggestion?
Yeah.
The. People that are going to escort the cars in or kind of filter the cars in at Maple. Perhaps even on the drive, at least Maple and Blue Star certainly. Maybe I could loan them yellow vests because they're going to be by vehicular traffic and it would be prudent to have a safety vest on. I can borrow them, I can issue them to those people and then take it from there, I think it would be something to consider.
Perfect, no, that, that's wonderful, yes. Yes, count on it, Chief will. Provide, I'm gonna write that note, great, perfect.
I have one other. Okay. Would, how does the group feel on the message board sign? Would you consider what if we put it by DPW on Thursday before the event? How do you feel about that? Rather than the day of the events, we could do it Thursday, Wednesday, Friday. Whatever you direct me to, Chief, them Blacker and Grassup's already approved it.
Okay.
So we'll have on there the date and the hours and it'll be pre-programmed. I just would like to know when you would like it.
Wait. What are you thinking?
Thursday, good. Sounds good.
Thursday?
Cool. That's perfect. Chief, is that something we need to run by Scott, just so he's cool with it?
I'd be happy to do that if you would direct me to.
Please, sir, thank you.
You got it.
Alright, Chief will do.
That's the twenty-ninth, okay.
Alright, perfect.
Twenty-ninth, yeah.
Garnet, you said the hours were nine and noon again, is that it?
Yep, yep.
So what, what haven't we thought of?
Did we iron out the details for the, the survey that we'll be giving to people coming through?
Yeah, Daniel, you want to fill this group in on that?
I think, I think it was Rana who created the questions, right Garnet?
Yep.
Rana created about five questions that we can ask people as, as they're coming through. Things that we think that, you know, will be helpful information going forward, there's a question asking people if they're willing to pay, you know, twelve to fifteen dollars per year to have. You know, one of these household hazardous waste days either once or twice a year. Which it would cost if it was built into either cities, single hauler contract. There's a question about whether or not they want one or more than one house or household hazardous waste events. At the recycling curb side, things like that. And I just, you know, I think that makes sense, I think it's information that we want, it's just a matter of what we think is the, the best way to. Execute those surveys. If we want to, you know, I was thinking almost, do we just have the surveys ourselves and fill them out and just ask people questions? So they don't have to touch anything or nothing has to be exchanged or if there's a different way we're thinking of doing it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Demetrius.
The survey could have a little box for which municipality people are.
Yeah, it'd be interesting too. We just don't want to slow down the flow though, right? We have to keep it in order.
Right.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
We could draft a survey on Survey Monkey and just have people, cell phones, the volunteers taking that data. It would, it would be accrued on that site and easily downloaded for analysis. And it's very quick.
Is that something you can do, Jim?
Sure.
There you go. Jim, yeah, if you have it in your hands, it's, and it's collecting data right there, it goes pretty fast.
Very, a good job making it interface with the cell phones and it's easy to fill it out.
Cool.
And Jim, I can send you questions that we have right now.
It's great, Daniel, thank you, yeah, and maybe it makes sense to have another couple of volunteers who just do that. So they have to get it done quickly and get people in and out.
Cool.
Where would you envision having that done after, if people was given or before?
No, because they're going to be standing there in line, I mean, so Doug, Doug has said. You can guarantee that people are going to be there early. So, you know, and we can start bringing folks in and they can park there and we can just start going from vehicle to vehicle. And if we control the flow really well, you know, we can have. One person stop a car, have the other person ask the questions, okay, there you go. Not let them go any further until they've answered those five questions. Simple.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so along, along those lines, volunteers, where. Where we can get volunteers, I mean, first of all. Obviously, the committee. So, committee, Jim, do you think we can get a few Rotary folks?
Oh, absolutely, I think we could stand volunteers from Rotary or Interact.
Oh, and Interact, I always forget about Interact, oh my god. Yeah. Demetrius, I thought maybe the church, the UCC, since we have that creation justice crew.
Our church has a creation care committee too, and I've asked them for donation, I plan to. Contact another couple of churches, they have very strong, most of what I've seen in our church, very strong. Desire to do things like this, just don't know how to coordinate them, so this is tailor made.
Okay, cool, do you, so I, I've, I worried about. Shifts for back, lack of a better word. You know, like, I, I will be there as soon as Drug and Lab Disposal gets, I'll, I'll be there all day. But I, I certainly didn't want to tax some folks more than they needed to be. So do you think I should set up a certain number of hour shift? I mean, we're going to be standing and that's hard on some folks. What do you all think?
Setup and breakdown. Forget that, so it's really a five hour event probably, not three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest we get some folks who are early birds to volunteer for setup and then they can go. Ninety minute early shift, ninety minute late shift and then some folks to help break down.
Okay.
What do others think?
I think that's a great idea, I think that we should anticipate people, you know, getting tired and needing a break.
Yep. Got it, noon to. One thirty, yeah, okay, alright. So I've just, I've just done ninety minute shifts, seven thirty to nine, nine to ten thirty, ten thirty noon, noon to one thirty. Fully anticipating that most folks will be. Like me, I want to stick around because we're going to try to make this as enjoyable as possible for everybody. Okay, let's see. I'm of course going to reach out to Isabel's about coffee for all of us and maybe some treats, some kind. Alright, what have I forgotten, you guys? So I, while you're thinking of it, and this might jog your brain. The, the one page I sent you was from, directly from Drug and Lab Disposal. As far as how long they've been doing this and what they do the day of. They'll bring in the equipment and supplies, the canopies, the setup and takedown. Personnel, unloading of participant vehicles, I love this, characterizations of unknowns. Sorting and DOT packaging. Labeling. Vehicles for removal of the hazardous and non-hazardous wastes, loading of those vehicles. Completing of the shipping papers, so I thought that might be helpful, so you, you had that, the other nifty handy. Document that I sent along, I think it was a link, a PDF, looks like this, this is actually Allegan County. I think what I'll do is. I think this will work, I really want you to, if you can, take a look at this and then that. Those three pages that Doug had really sent me, which actually is two pages, one was directly from their page and then the other was an Excel sheet, which. Had everything kind of like this. If you could, and I don't, you know, I think, I think this was such a great visual. I'm just always worried about leaving things out and have to figure out a way to best. Put that in an easy. Document so that people can, does that make sense what I'm asking? If you could, see, see if there's anything else that needs to be added or something that's not very clear, how's that? Does that make sense?
Garnet, I just mentioned the fundraising we're trying to do and how that relates to everything.
Yeah.
Cities that really got behind this in a big way and it's very exciting. Rotary is committing to try to raise ten thousand dollars for this and. We've got the first five pretty much in, in the bank. And we're going for a grant from the Rotary International Foundation through our district. We had something earmarked for another need, a COVID need last summer that never materialized. And they're asking us to redirect that grant and so if it's approved, we'll have the ten thousand dollars. In order to get the five thousand from them, they love it when we do unique things that are. Not just paying vendors to take stuff away. So if the five, if, if there's five thousand dollars of a budget that can be kind of devoted to all marketing. PR related activity, brochures, leave behind signage, t-shirts, all of that's ready stuff. That, you know, I can, I can put a budget together and say, your money is going to this stuff, the. That will allow the city and Rotary's rest of the money to make it free of charge for residents, which will expand the usage of it, which is our objective, right? That's, that's my constraint on the grant. So as much as possible, I want to direct our money towards sort of the necessary fixed investments to get the day off the ground. Rather than the variable costs of taking the, the materials.
Okay. Just. Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, you and I can coordinate. All that fun stuff then, you know, like paying for the flyers and. And t-shirts and hats and lanyards and stuff like that.
Whether there's an international brochure you want them to leave with about what the cities and the township. Would recommend for homeowners to manage the, the waste situation at home. Like a public service announcement or something like that, all of those things I think can be easily funded by Rotary.
Okay. Chief, do you know, do you know if there's anything like that, Chief, as far as something that? Is generally shared with households about, you know, here's what you can do to decrease those types of household hazardous waste items?
No, I, right now I'm drawing a blank on that, but I can certainly look into it, Garnet.
Yeah, Daniel, I'm wondering if maybe Allegan County, maybe Rosemary, I wonder if they have something with their recycling.
I can definitely reach out to her and see what she thinks, she's really responsive.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I wonder if, you know, the postcard mailer. Might be another item that could be handed to them and say, put this up on your. Refrigerator, freezer, your.
Yeah, that's actually brilliant, okay.
That is a good idea.
That's brilliant, that, that would be huge, okay. Alright, Jim, stay tuned on that one, so. Yeah, I think Rana, you and I and Daniel will probably on the side coordinate specifically about that stuff. Okay, let me think. What have we forgotten?
Garnet, you, you may have touched this, I might have missed it. Who's going to collect the money in this, the line of the people that, what assignment, who's directed to do that?
That's a good question, I mean. We can pick one or two money collector people, maybe, that's money.
As long as we have that, those positions identified, it would be, it would help.
Yeah. Who will do it, I'm writing this down. Yeah, plus I need change probably, hopefully, okay, yeah, what you got, Demetrius?
Maybe the committee members, likely they'll be there all day, maybe we should bring our little chairs or beach chairs for when we take a break. Off to, you know.
Yeah, bring a chair, yeah.
On the way to the bathroom.
There you go. After you get a cup of coffee.
And a snack.
Yeah, alright, I'm gonna. Write this up. Alright, okay. So why don't we do this, it's a lot to ruminate on, Patrick, you've been really quiet. Anything to add?
I'm new at this, I'm listening.
I'm new at this.
We've been watching this happen, this is like a, a, a hive of bees, everybody. Sticking their teeth, I'm really impressed with this process.
Yeah, it's, it's a good crew, that, that makes life really easy. So let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, five, five weeks until this event. What I was proposing, maybe in. Two or three weeks that we reconvene. For another check-in. And of course, that doesn't mean that we can't trade notes and suggestions and such back and forth. Kathy had graciously agreed to take notes today and, and I did as well, so the two of us will collaborate on getting kind of a summary doc out, if you will. How does every, what do you think, eighth or fifteenth?
Fifteenth would be better for me, only that I'm beginning to travel back to the area from California.
Okay.
Night.
Fifteen, okay.
You know, it doesn't matter, if you want to meet on the eighth, I can do that too.
Okay. So I have city, yeah, yeah, let's do it on the fifteenth, because I've got city council on the eighth and I wouldn't want to rush, even though. You know, y'all are good about, good about this, let's do it on the fifteenth. At three o'clock. April fifteenth, I gotta write this down, otherwise I'll forget it. Until that time, let me tell you kind of what my thoughts are and so, because I'm keeping to my hour, I got ten minutes. My thoughts were that April first would be kind of the day to start all. Promotion, if you will, of this event. A teaser on our Facebook page. Which will then, and then basically from there, it would kind of evolve into stay tuned for the signup sheet, here's what it means. Here's who can participate, just using a lot of our social media stuff to kind of get the buzz, if you will. If that's too late, let me know, I mean, it's, what are we at, what day is today? So that's a week away. I could even put a note out today and just say, hey, stay tuned. More, more, more coming about the household hazardous way, April the first and stay tuned for details. Mark your calendar. I'm inclined to say it's never too soon to start getting this information out.
Garnet, with that necessity lining Scott up for the story for the paper next week?
No, we talked about either the eighth. Probably the eighth, having that article in the eighth of April paper, which would really be kind of timely, really.
Yeah, it's right after research or two, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to wait till the twenty-second, that was too late. And I, I say those dates because our regularly scheduled articles from the recycling committee are on the first, the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth. So we wanted to squeeze one in there and he graciously said, of course, no problem, so. So that's kind of my thoughts, it's starting to get the buzz a little bit. I would encourage those of you who are social media inclined to then begin to share that in your ways, that would be really cool. Does that make sense?
And there will be a logo and brand imagery that's being developed and.
Rana's got it, yeah, I will, why don't I write myself a note, share logo. With committee.
Garnet?
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, if that could be shared with us, we will try to put that on our message board in front of the station. That would really add a nice touch to it, I just need the graphics and then I'm just going to dump it on Chris Mantle, so. I'm not doing it, I don't know how to do it, I'm going to see if he can do it.
Sound, surround yourself with people who have better skills than you do, it's the way to do it.
That's, that's the only reason I get by.
Very good, alright. Other thoughts?
Happy to be working with you guys on this.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. I really appreciate it. I'm really excited about this. I have to tell you, I think, um. You know, we'll be able to generate some good community-wide buzz, which is always a good thing. Um, I mean, it's a great service for our residents.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just playing fun.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you do it?
That's exactly, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. All right, very good. Anything else for the good of the order? Good? All right, excellent. Y'all are great. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye now.